Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to today's city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, October the 3rd, 2023. The time is now 6:00 P. M., the regular meeting of the city council. The city of Trinidad will not be ordered. Would you please rise for your members? Trinidad, would you please lead us?
Oh, sorry. I'd like to lead to the flag of the United States of America and of the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I never get chosen.
Look alive, mister. Wolfson, please.
Dubon.
Here.
Grego.
Here.
Olutree.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Lanson.
He is, Mr. Williamson is absent. He called just minutes ago and said he had an emergency at his place of employment and he won't be here. And we have Mr. Rude who is on Zoom with us tonight. Steve, can you hear us well?
Yeah, Mayor. Good to see you all from Austin. I like the glasses, man.
Yeah.
They look like a prom night on the screen. Obviously suck.
Item two approval again. Any council have any changes to the agenda that you'd like to make? Entertaining motion, please. Call who? Need a second?
Second.
Call who?
Dubon.
Yes.
Grego.
Yes.
Olutree.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Item three policy item and staff report. Mr. Rude, do you have anything special at this time other than the Greenway Foundation update?
Mayor, no, just our update for our friend with the Greenway Foundation.
Okay. Jeff, go ahead and take it away, please.
Thank you very much. I'm going to do a quick T. F. and then I'm going to defer to the brains of the Pearson Shoemaker Partnership, which means Dean. Let me start with this. Mayor, thank you for your service to the community and the city of Trinidad and beyond. I, in my own foreign fashion version, I've been on your side of the service aisle and your leadership and your commitment to Trinidad and the Purgatory River and the citizens of your city. And, and, and it's been just a delight and an honor for Dean and I to engage with you. And at the end of the day, sir, under your administration, a vision was started for a river that has so much potential. And I don't care if anybody else remembers it, Phil. My family will remember it. So it's important for me, 200 miles away, for you to hear that and see that from this, you know, whiskery shoemaker here. And, and Steve, step in and wherever you want, Jared, wherever you are, step in. We're here today to answer questions about a proposal from the Arcaterra Group. I will remind you, Mayor, and remind the members of council. With my retirement at the end of last year after an incredibly crazy 40-plus years and Dean is liking this, I'm actually, under the current proposal for you, I'm a subcontractor to Arcaterra Group. So I now work for Dean, you know? Yeah.
That was a reversal.
Yeah. And by the way, the VTA and the quality of that proposal just went up exponentially. So we are here to speak to, engage, and, and I'll finish with this. I've been, I think it was almost three years ago when I sat down and started to really engage with the community of Trinidad. And by community, I mean the people of Trinidad and the geography and the topography and the recreation and environmental potential. And I have been and remained honored, remain honored, whatever my role is moving forward, to do everything I can as one person to maximize the potential of the Purgatory and therefore the city of Trinidad. So we're here. You have the proposal before you. I'm going to stop, turn it over to my brother from another mother, Dean, and then here we go. So I'll stop there.
By the way, thank you for the recognition. I really appreciate that.
Let's desert, sir. Let's desert.
Go ahead, Dean.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. It's nice to see you again, even though it's just virtually. I think, as you remember, the, we saw you last at the end of May. We presented our conceptual design for the Purgatory River Vision Plan and some perspective images. So we're here tonight to talk about a contract amendment for the next phase, which is the preliminary design phase. So we've assembled a team of consultants that we've worked pretty extensively with in the past to basically round out our team. The goal is to take the conceptual design and take it to another level of detail. So you'll see, I'm going to briefly go through all our different consultants on this team. But MSH, that's the one and only Jeff Shoemaker. He's on the team really to help us out with funding and implementation strategies. And I think you know that that's, that's his, that's his sweet spot. He's, he is a master of that kind of thing. So we also have Bailey Professional Services. They will do additional topographic surveys. So we got aerial topographic survey for the last phase. This is where we're going to do underpasses. They'll actually get down there and, and survey under the bridges and get us another level of detail of that. We have HKS on the team to do subsurface utility research. We have Kumar Associates. They will do a geotechnical report that will provide more detailed design for our spectral to be able to design the foundations for the various structures and any retaining walls that we'll have. We have Respec. They're our civil engineer and they will do floodplain analysis, basically evaluate all the improvements, make sure we're not impacting the floodplain. They'll do drainage design for any of the parking areas, parking lots for detention and water quality. And then they will also help us as we realign the riverbank in a couple of areas where the trail of the passes. We've also got Ackerman Engineering. They're electrical and lighting designers. Waterline Studios, we've worked with them on several water features. They really understand the makings of a good water, water feature and how, how to make it maintainable also. So they're a great additional team. We have ERO Resources. They're an environmental consultant that we work with all the time. So they will look at the natural resources of the river corridor. They will delineate the wetlands and assist us with an environmental permitting strategy, mainly all the water engineers. SMRC is our structural design. They will do the design of any of the structure foundations, retain walls. And then we have Thomas X Studios. They're the architects on the team. So we have that, if you recall, the band structure and several shade structures. So they will be helping with that. So preliminary design schedule is intended to be about 14 months. So the goal is to finish that up in December of next year, 2024. And again, we want to present you with a preliminary design drawing package that's very detailed that we can share with suppliers and contractors and really nail down the cost for this. The cost estimate we gave you for conceptual design, while it's a good number to use, it's, there's a lot of lump sum numbers. So this will allow us to say, we have this many cubic yards of concrete foundations. And so it will allow us to really dial down the construction costs. And that will allow Jeff to really work with you on funding strategies, implementation strategies, phasing, just how can you get this built? So.
Hey, Dean, one thing that I, the last meeting, the last presentation that you gave us, I'd asked that when you do get all this, by that time I'll be gone. But I would, I think council would like to see the cost in phases so that rather than just a lump sum or a lump sum of, so that way they can pick different phases and with the recommendation for phase one, phase two, phase three would be that way that they could parse it out as, as necessary rather than just one large lump sum.
Absolutely, Mayor. And we took a crack at that in the estimate. We did break it out by Chanino Park, Los Ineos Soccer Improvement, the Trail Bed and then the rest of the river quarter. But I think as we get tighter numbers, that's where Jeff can really help us work with you closely to come up with a, a strategy in terms of phase, basically what you build first or what you try to build first.
Exactly. Okay. Now, do you have any other information or is Jeff going to speak now? Or does he have, do you want?
Okay. I love the question, does Jeff want to speak? Here's my deal. I've told you this for three years. This is a game changer for your city. This is the future of your city. This is the economic vitality of your city. This is the life and wellness and health of your city. Those are big words, you know? And talk is cheap and walk is what it is. I'm at a stage in my life, everybody, where I get to pick and choose what I do and what I don't do, especially now. And you guys can believe me or not, I'm in this from heart as much as anything else. And I think as much as my life's work can speak to, with this next phase, the Purgatory River is on the cusp of increased greatness. And if you all approve this, however we can be involved to help your city move forward, Dean and I are there and we're just honored and excited to be a part of this if you choose to let us be. So I'll stop there, Mayor.
Well, you know, the, the rendition that you gave us, people, we have those renditions over at the Space Great Project for people to view whenever they walk in there. So a few people look at them and they're pretty impressed. So any questions for either Dean or Mr. Shoemaker? No, my, I have a question.
I don't have a question, but I have a statement, I guess. You know, it's glad, I'm so glad, Jeff, that you're emotionally attached to this project because we need you in there, you know, to finish it. We're, we're in the, what's, we're at the end of the second quarter going into halftime and we need to get together so we can finish the game. But, you know, I think you're absolutely right. This is a win-win. I think what's really important, I mean, all aspects of this project are important. But what's really important, I think, is that the changes that we're going to make to Chanino Park, because if you've seen the issues we've had downtown with festivals, if we can get that area built specific for festivals and public gatherings, Trinidad will be able to bring more festivals in without impacting our downtown small businesses. And I think that's, that's going to be fantastic. I can't wait.
I'm like a bobble doll here.
I'm just excited to see all that. That's it.
I think, no, nothing right now. I think it's a good idea.
I am thrilled that this is, continues to move forward. I wanted, the one thing that I wanted you all to touch base with us on was whether or not or how your communication has happened with the Purgatory River Water Conservancy District because that's really important around here. And so I want to just make sure that they're at the table in some way so that they have buy-in as well. We need their buy-in.
So may I?
Yes, please.
Yeah. The very next step to your poignant point is that if you approve this and when Dean is under contract and if possible, before the end of this, if not, at the very beginning of 2024, you bring all the affectable, all the passionate partners, all of the legal stakeholders, stakeholders together, and we all sit around a round table. And I'm stating that both parenthetically and purposely. And we have one common goal. And that is how do we make the Purgatory River better for the greater good? Now, that's a nice little speech statement there, but too much. And that is, there's no way that this will ever happen if all of the current, future potential partners are not at the table from day one. And I assure you that will be the case.
So that's when they will be having input in all of this?
And, and here's what I'm going to, I'm going to do the little caveat here. That, that is my intention. That's my first cut. That's my instinct and that is in early, in hard, in often. And, you know, there is no I in team. And I, you know, I obviously didn't invent that. But here, here's the reality. Dean and I are, we live where we live. So we want to be a vessel. We want to be a partner. We want to be an opportunity to bring in the far more local stakeholders in this. And at the end of the day, I don't give a you-know-what's-you-know-where about the fact that Pearson or Shoemaker have any history in this. All our goal is, is to give you the best opportunity for your river and therefore your city. And that's truly, again, at this stage in my life, the honest truth. I'm, I'm, I'm in this thing way more personally than contractually. And you guys can believe that or not, that's up to you. But I'm too old and too stupid to BS you guys. And, and so, yeah, we're going to figure it out. And it's iterative and, and everybody's got to be willing to give and take. But at the end of the day, what's the common goal? A maximized Purgatory River for a maximized Trinidad. It's not that complicated.
I totally agree with you and I appreciate the vision that you painted for us.
Thank you.
I've learned in the years that I've been doing this that things that are magnificent take time. And this is taking time, but it is going to be magnificent.
And you know what? I'll finish with this. It won't matter when the deal is done and the celebration is there. Who gives a you-know-what about how long it took or who made it happen? That doesn't matter.
Yeah.
The, the joy is in the prize.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
You know, Jeff, one question I do have. You mentioned early on or by, by the bit, Dean, that there was going to be a realignment of the riverbank in a couple of spots. Is that correct, Dean?
Yes, sir.
Has there been any conversation with the irrigators on that and the point that it might impact?
There have not been. This shouldn't impact them at all. The only place we're intending to realign the river is at Anamis Street and Cedar Street where the trail of the passes would be. And the reason is, especially at Cedar Street, the river actually runs right underneath the retaining wall there. So we want to shift, there's kind of a side channel. So we want to shift that. So that should have no impact on them, but we'll certainly be happy to, to run that by them and discuss that with them.
Yeah, I think it probably wouldn't be a bad idea because we don't want to do something or, you know, bring them in early on so that they understand that that is the one point that they need to know about. And I, and I will say this, and Ms. Grego and Ms. Olutree referenced this is that, and you did too, is that everybody needs to be pointing in the same direction. And I, I have, the experience I have on that is when we did Fisher's Peak, every, all the partners that we had, all were aligned for the same end result. And that's the reason why it, you know, it happened so fast because everybody was in alignment and everybody had the same mindset. We got to make this work, we got to make this work. And I think it could happen with this here too. So it's just, you know, the leadership at the time, to make sure everybody's in alignment, that they can, if there's any difficulties along the way, you resolve them and move on. But at the same time, that focus never changes. So that is the important part. Anything else?
Well, sir.
When are we going to start with this?
Yeah. Exactly.
Steve, when are you going to bring this forward?
Mr. Mayor, we will probably bring it as soon as the next council meeting, assuming we get everything squared away with Jeff and Dean. And I think we'll be there. I just want to make one other comment. I really appreciate Councilmember Olutree's question about working with our partners. I can tell you that there was a lot of initial discussion, some good, some bad, that we've already gone through. And so a lot of the feedback is already being incorporated into the designs that you, you're currently seeing. And I think it's really important, and I'm glad you brought that up, that we can continue that dialogue and, and work together for something that's in the best interest of Trinidad. But Mayor, we're ready to bring this forward just as soon as we can.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. Jeff and Dean, thank you for the update and hope to see you soon.
I got one final thing. Rude, I don't know what's better, your tie or your glasses. Thank you. You know, I don't, I don't get to, I get to speak to Shoemaker now, but I, it's an honor. And you guys remember what MSH stands for. Let's go MSH this sucker. Let's do it.
You know, next time you see, I want to see your glasses like Steve has on you.
Yeah. You can remind him.
You signed Dean's, you signed Dean's contract. You got it.
Okay. On to.
Thank you all. Take care.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Okay. On to item four petitions or communications or written. Do we have any people's?
Okay. Mr. Hooks, Mr. Haskell Hooks. Good afternoon to the council. My name is Haskell Hooks. Anyway, I'd like to pass these out. Good work, you diligently on getting the memorial statue erected for Miss Cathay Williams, who was a member of the Buffalo Soldiers through the 38th Infantry on, in November 15th, 1866, disguised as a first documented woman, disguised as a man. And successfully somehow she was able to, here we go. So anyway, I just wanted to, I've been working on these flyers and I'll show you one. Thank you.
Okay. Well, uh.
So that way at least everybody has one. I'm looking for sponsors. This is my third time. I would like to get a statue, memorial statue erected in the city of Trinidad here on November 15th, 2026, which would get her 160 years of her enlistment. Now, if you notice on the flyer, you know, I designed that there's a 34-star Union Flag and behind it is her enlistment papers. So that's why I'm working on doing this by the year 2026. That would be 160-year anniversary of her signing and listing for as to become the first documented woman, African-American to enlist. So kind of got it. Excuse me right now, but I had a stroke in, in February and I have kind of like trying to short-term memory of standing for gay membership. And it just flies off the top of my head, so.
You're doing great, Haskell.
Okay. Yeah. I actually got an appointment to see a vascular surgeon on Thursday so they can see what they're going to do with me because I've got basically 100% blockers on this side and a bunch on the other side. So this is going the best I can, laying down what I got in front of all. Thank you very much and hope you consider me moving forward. And just trying to do the best I can in Trinidad altogether after 30 years. And I enjoy it.
Thank you. Thank you. On to item five consent agenda approval. Item five, approval of regular meeting minutes of September the 19th, 2023, a special meeting minutes of September the 25th, 2023. Item B, approval of a special event permit application, malt, venus, spiritualist filed by memorial statue for Miss Cathay Williams at 204 South Chestnut Street in November 4th, 2023. Of course, Mr. Haskell Hooks is here. Appreciate you being here. Item C, approval of special event permit application, malt, venus, and spiritualist filed by Trinidad Autism Organization at 204 South Chestnut Street on October 14th, 2023. Do we have a representative here? Ms. Baldino or?
I'm here.
You're here for her? Okay. Thank you. Item D, approval of the bills for $1,153,423.46. Approval of payroll from September the 30th, 2023 through October the 13th, 2023 in the amount of $446,684.66. Entertaining motion? So, give me a second.
Sure.
Call a vote, please.
Dubon.
Yes.
Grego.
Yes.
Olutree.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Haskell, if you would stick around to the end of the meeting because he may have an additional question for you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item six, public hearings. We have none. Item seven, unfinished business. We have none. Item eight, leave Miss Lynn's business, 880. Submission to the city council draft 2024 capital budget estimates and set public hearings to October 17th, 2023 at 6:00 P. M. Entertaining motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Navarette, what do you have for us? I don't know if I like that all right.
Thank you.
So we're handing out the preliminary budget now and we will discuss at the next work session. This copy, these copies will be available at City Hall and at Apple Library for review starting tomorrow.
I'll give it to you. I'll pretend like I'm following.
At this point in time, do we have a total estimated?
Of the back. Very last.
That's it?
$58,000?
They're really dropped. Is that workable?
We're making it work. The, we have not considered anything for salaries or any extras at this time. We've decreased marijuana revenue significantly and then sales tax. It's about equal to what we judged it is for 2023. Yeah. We're figuring out how to make it work.
Any other questions at this time for?
I, you know, it's, this is going to be an item after, after your presentation. But how did you incorporate that huge increase in insurance in this budget?
Oh, we, we cut out quite a, well, I think we'll talk about that at the work session. But we, we found a little bit extra money in how we allocate the marijuana.
Okay.
So, but we'll talk about that on Monday.
Any other, any other questions?
Does the lodging tax potential?
It does not. Yeah. We're just keeping it flat until we get closer. Same with property tax. We're keeping it as is until we know about HH. Because if HH passes, it's going to significantly decrease the property taxes.
What about our landfill situation?
Landfill is as is as well. We have not, once we know if the, it passes to bring it out from the, an enterprise fund, we'll move it into the general fund. But right now it's standing on its own as an enterprise fund.
I, I went and looked at our current budget this year and. I, I went and looked at our current budget this year and I looked at all the items, went through everything. And I'm going to get with Mr. Ruger. Are you going to be here Thursday, Mr. Ruger or?
Sure, yes, I will be back in the office first thing Thursday morning.
Because I do want to get with you, I may be in trouble Thursday. I'll, I'll get ahold of you because I went through and I, I spotted some areas that maybe we could discuss about reductions and some other things. I think I've talked to you about a couple of them. And I think he's going to have you sitting with us. Maybe we go through some of my thoughts, maybe where I thought of them. I don't know if you're sure about the future. Now, there's no further questions. Call a vote, please.
Dubana?
Yes.
Kriego?
Yes.
Olutrin?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you. Item A B, consideration of twenty twenty-four property casualty workers compensation renewal, quotes received from SIRS. And amount is one million, two hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred forty-seven dollars. I don't know what we do, but this is scary.
It is. What do I have for us? Like, we have quotes from SIRS that are showing a significant increase from previous years. We've looked at an analysis with our deductibles by, you know, increasing deductibles and seeing where we would land and the savings over a three-year period would, would be very, very minimal and not worth the risk that we have a greater number of claims in a year and have to put the deductible out of pocket. It's just basically a sign of what Colorado is going through. I know Karen has spoken, spoken about that in the past about how Colorado is now a high-risk state and between wildfires, flooding, earthquakes, there's, there's so many risks now that it's driving our costs up. Work home, we had a few claims and it was based on twenty twenty-two, so you have to remember the timeframe, the rolling and the. Because in twenty twenty-three, we actually received an award from SIRS first week, so. I, well, it should help.
Yeah.
I don't have a whole lot more to say than what was provided in the packet. SIRS gave a lot of information trying to explain why the increase was so significant. Basically, our, our claim numbers even here just now paced our contributions and so they have to look at bottom line because they're, you know, they're, they have to represent the whole entire pool. And so I'm sure every one of the cities across the state that are participating in this poll are seeing the same kind of increases that we're seeing. They have a police department especially. That was a huge impact. Also, I don't know if you read the council communication, but I think the only thing that I wanted to really point out is that we're not even with both the work comp and property casualty insurance combined. We're not even where we are. We're with health insurance premiums for benefits for the city employees. And so if you look at it comparatively, this one point two million dollars covers an awful lot of assets and the workers in case there were accident on the job. So I think that's how I had to look at it to solve about four hundred thousand dollars in an increase, but it's significant. Increase is significant.
Now, before we move on to our discussion, entertained a motion?
Second?
Second.
Discussion with council? Any questions?
No.
So we're doing well in twenty twenty-three on our losses per workman's compensation. Will we see an immediate reduction next year?
I would hope that we would. Part of it's going to depend also on what we pay in place. As you know, the work comp is, that's a driver as well. We should, we should see some reduction.
You know what's really hard about this? I knew it was coming. I never in my wildest dreams think that it would almost double like it did because I've seen it in the, in my business, but what really is killer on this is all up and down the front range this year, there have been catastrophic hail losses, wind losses and, you know, we're, but I can tell you as as a person that's in this business, SIRS is the only way to go. I mean, not, I wouldn't even think about trying to go do something else. It's expensive, but can you imagine if we went to the private market with that premium, would it be at least four times higher than that?
No, I, I would be the simple thing is, so I think we can do to lower this. I mean, safety precautions, anything, and do we need to get with Cheryl and work on next year's budget? If this is going to be increased every year, I mean, we might have to look at that down the road.
Well, I will say that the city has a very good safety program in place. Our safety manager tries really hard to get as many credits as possible to, that help offset those increases. Aside from that, you know, I spoke to the assets that the city has and with the way inflation is, that affects our premiums as well because the costs of replacement, replacement of a building or replacement of what have you, your car, building, all of it's escalating. And so it's just, I think, what we're going to have to deal with going forward and we've probably been lucky to not have to pay as much in previous years. It's just, we're here right now.
Is the police department doing what it can to kind of mitigate the costs involved? Like, do they have safety programs in place and training that, that we can show SIRS that, you know, we're, we're doing what we can to?
The safety, yeah. Police department always scores really high with their areas that SIRS books out. They always score very high. Again, it's back to being in a pool where across the state, we've seen a lot of really, really large payouts from lawsuits. And so we just happen to be in that same pool and so we share the losses.
If I could please add to that, the police department, they have a lot of de-escalation training. They have a lot of training specifically designed for those things that really increase the premium. So I think that's helpful.
Decrease the premium.
Decrease premiums, I'm sorry.
I would add also that Trinidad was one of the cities that early on obtained body cameras, council-proofed body cameras, and they've been just invaluable. Totally invaluable because there's proof and there can't be allegations made against the police department that that go unsubstantiated because there's not proof. And so it's been really a, a good thing for the department, a good thing for the city.
Is there anything we can do to decrease that premium at this point or we're just in the, in the mix?
Well, we, one of the ways always is to look at the deductible, but we looked at even a ten thousand dollar deductible and it was, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense to do that and the decrease was just not there.
The only area, like I said, is workman's comp, but we're already doing everything we can there with the training and stuff. Anything else? Okay. You know, the whole thing is, even the private market is scary enough. This comes up with you and discussed with you is that the scary part is this, that so many insurance companies who go under the private sector, they're not even writing some policies in some areas and especially in wildfire areas, which is what we are in. There are insurance companies that are exiting areas. So like I said, I think SIRS is still the best. But at one point will they start looking at some of these cuts? We just never know. We just, we just don't know. If you ask, do you, I think the body cams we've had those for what, maybe six years?
Oh, at least.
Yeah.
It's been at least.
Six, six years, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, call a vote, please.
Dubana?
Yes.
Kriego?
Yes.
Olutrin?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item A C, resolution in support of lodging tax increase question appearing on November seventh, twenty twenty-three ballot. Entertained a motion?
Second.
And discussion, Garrett, anything? What I would do before, I'm going to actually go and I'm going to read the resolution. Right. Resolution number sixteen forty-seven. Resolution, the city council, the city of Trinidad, Colorado, supported lodging tax increase. Question appearing on November seventh, twenty twenty-three ballot. Whereas by adoption of ordinance number thirty-eighty-one approved on September one, twenty twenty-three, the city council submitted lodging tax increase ballot issued to the city's electorate for the consideration at November seventh, twenty twenty-three regular municipal election. And whereas lodging taxes are imposed on the cost of hotel rooms or other temporary accommodations paid primarily by visitors rather than city residents. And whereas the city council recently approved ordinance number thirty-seventy-two, which expanded on the use of the lodging tax to include not only marketing, but also for attracting conferences, conventions and meetings, operation of the welcome center and for a convention and visitor bureau for maintenance, improvement and development of quality of life facilities and programs and to support art and cultural events, programs and facilities. And whereas the city's lodging tax rate has not been increased since its inception in twenty twenty-two and the rates of most common municipalities are much higher than Trinidad's rate of three percent. And whereas increasing the lodging tax will add revenue that will allow many improvements to the city without burdening local residents. And whereas approval will be increased to the lodging taxes and important step in securing an additional revenue stream that will assist with positive and meaningful growth of the city. Now therefore, it'd be resolved by the city council, the city Trinidad, that the city council hereby declares its support for the increase of the lodging tax collected by the city of Trinidad and urges the voters of the city to vote yes on the ballot issue at November seventh, twenty twenty-three election. Any questions at this time? Go ahead and give the thought. None?
Hope they pass this.
Yes.
Is it nice to underread, remember the record because I know that was important for the newspaper and anybody listening in to know that it is cost not to the resident in the community, but to tourists that stay in Trinidad. There's no further questions. Call a vote, please.
Dubana?
Yes.
Kriego?
Yes.
Olutrin?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. A D, resolution supporting submission of a grant application to Waldo Parks and Wildlife Committee in amount of two hundred dollars from the lodging tax funds. Entertained a motion? Second?
Second.
Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to talk on this as well. If, and Jared certainly feel free to chime in. Jen Green had hit us up about helping out with this grant. It's for general trails planning. It's an eight thousand dollar grant. And the Trails Alliance has asked the city for a couple hundred dollars to support their required match. And part of the application requires this resolution. The grant application was actually due today, but Jen did submit the, a copy of the resolution, pre-approval and let them know it'd be up for consideration tonight. Jared, certainly feel free to add anything I'm, I'm missing.
Well, that's pretty much it. Because the project is focused on wormhole and it is city property. The grant application requires that the city pass a resolution supporting because it is planned to do additional two miles on the wormhole trail. Otherwise, everything, Steve said, is completely accurate and it requires, it does require, I can't remember the percentage of in-kind match, but does, for a part of that match is a cast match and that was a two hundred dollar. I think we're budget, I don't know, I'll talk to Cheryl, but I think we can probably afford two hundred bucks.
I think we can pitch a little bit. Has to happen.
Any questions? You know, but thank you for letting us pass weekend.
Oh, hey, that's everybody, everybody, everybody made that successful, so.
It had to start with somebody.
That's right. How does the person happen to answer the phone at the right time?
That's not going to answer. No, we can all see what, how dark our rec is doing for Trinidad and we'd be very foolish if we didn't take this opportunity.
No, no, just fine.
Appreciate you. Two hundred dollars is very minimal. Any other questions? Call a vote, please.
Dubana?
Yes.
Kriego?
Yes.
Olutrin?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item A B, consideration of bid results, phase two exterior rehabilitation and stabilization of Fox West Theater, amount of three hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars to Agave Landscape and Masonry. Entertained a motion?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Garrett, does that, had you down this?
It's either myself or Mr. Ruger. He, he's very familiar with.
Yeah, I think one of us, thank you, Audrey.
So.
Well, I can get started if, if that's okay. So this is, we got a EIAF grant this year for, well, sorry, this is a Colorado Creative Industries grant for exterior stabilization of the Fox Theater. It's part of the upgrades. But I'll let Audrey talk about the bid process and what we were seeing.
Okay, so this is consideration of award bid for phase two of the exterior rehabilitation and stabilization of the Fox. The city, what did it's up? I don't have the details of when exactly earlier. Probably about three weeks ago, received two bids. One from Agave Landscape and Masonry in the amount of three hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And then a second one from H W Houston in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Both of them were qualified bids. They both made their bid, um, big bonds and appeared to have the credentials to do this work. However, Agave was the whole bidder and you'll remember, they were awarded phase one. So they're very familiar with the building and the rehab to, to date on the exterior. So the recommendation would be to award the bid to Agave.
Questions?
It has to be done.
So Audrey, we had some diagrams in our packets. So that's like tech pointing, is that what you call it when you do breakwork? Tech pointing, the big back here in the, in the north section.
It looks like it's just all the way around the building in several spots.
The whole sections, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that's what we were doing.
Maybe a little bit more challenging because there's power over on the south side, the, the height on the south side. This will have a little bit more of a challenge to it than the phase one did.
I wouldn't do it, no.
And we're approaching winter months. There's a little bit there.
Yeah.
Are we getting grant funding for this too?
Yes, this is from State Historic Fund and the Fox West Theater Alliance is matching.
So we don't really.
The city is not incurring costs for this space.
That's great.
How long will this take to grant money?
The bid was announced for a hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty?
Mm-hmm. So we'll see. Hopefully, hopefully we can get it done in that time. Again, we're approaching winter, winter. We'll make sure with the contractor that they're comfortable with that hundred and eighty day timeframe because of the winter coming on and there's, there's just a lot more of this kind scaffolding, power, whatever area that is of concern. So there's just a little bit different than phase one.
Question. H W Houston, were they the ones who, the contractors who did space decree?
Yes.
The ones that they're still bidding on, so.
Me too. That's great. I thought it was too. It was nice to see anybody else bid on something like that. The last time we only had Agave that bid on the project, so. And I actually have one other. And I actually had one other contractor inquire about the bid documents and received them. They ultimately didn't submit a bid, so thank you.
You know, tech pointing is very tedious work. I watched Jim Brandt, it's just very, very tedious work, so.
Especially at those guys.
Yeah, and so there's a, there's a lot of building. There's a number of questions, Colville, please.
Tabana?
Yes.
Kriego?
Yes.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yep.
Thurman?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. And my council reports. Well, this was mentioned earlier, the Trinidad Autism Organization, they're having their fundraiser October 14 to 7 o'clock. Cataluchia better is gonna play, and tickets are only available at the door. This is gonna be at Fort Bloom. And then Los Angeles County Veterans Council, they're starting to organize their Veterans Dinner, early part of November, and that's gonna be at Sebastian's Giamini. It's always a nice event. Get some more information as these were.
That's it. I can't remember if I reported on this already. Fisher's Peak had their first trail run, race?
Yeah.
Did I? Eight miles, all the way up and all the way down. Yeah, I was there for first aid. I was just lucky that I walked up to the starting line, but yeah, it was, it was not easy. I got to volunteer for the Rad Dirt Fest, and I'm, just too bad Mr. Chatterley left because I was so impressed with that event. It was pretty amazing to see something like that happen in Trinidad. I was, I volunteered, I was a drug chaperone, because there's professional athletes, they had to be drug tested, and that was very interesting, very interesting. And today, the school district asked my daughter Kathleen and I to participate in a program, Colorado Proud School Meal Day, and I guess they picked us because we like to eat. But anyway, it was very interesting because there's a local flavor to the bid. So the head dietitian for the school district got tomatoes and green chilies from Nichols Farms. She got some produce from area farmers around here, got sweet potatoes, they made a harvest. Everything they made to date and served to the kids were Colorado produce, so that was really great. And it was all healthy, it was a chicken stew. They even had a healthy carrot cake made out of locally grown carrots, so it was very interesting to be able to see that. That's it?
Did you bring us any samples?
I ate them.
Yeah. Why, I don't have a report, but I wanted to ask you a question on the lady that sent a question here. It's kind of a unique situation that, is, does she have any recognition by anybody else?
Uh, she.
I mean, I'm just kind of curious that, you know, we're doing this, did she get any recognition from the army or anything like that?
Uh, she did get recognition also to the Trinidad Historical Museum, the Buffalo, Denver Buffalo Soldier Association did put a plaque there for her. I think it was about 2013. So they put a plaque there, and then I have some paperwork for discharge papers from the United States Army and actually disability papers, but they signed when they rejected her disability here in Trinidad, Colorado.
Didn't she have a home here, a family home here?
Uh, she, through my, uh, through my research over at the Carnegie Library, one of the librarians, I believe his name was Mike, he found me a directory that was 1893 that had her name. So I do have a copy of that also.
No, I was really just kind of curious since it was a unique situation there at the army, or somebody who recognized that, you know, her being a woman in the military in.
Disguise.
Yeah, well, you know.
Sir.
She was supposed to be buried here, right?
Uh, yes, that's what Buzz said. I had spoken one day on Facebook with Brother Harry, and we were in a discussion on where she was buried at, and he came up and he said that she was buried at the Catholic Cemetery. Now, he had said that he had been to a meeting, and, you know, being old records, he tried to find them, but he could not. I mean, you know, after a bunch of years of his profession as a retired pastor, you're just not gonna find all the records.
Yeah, okay, that's all, thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thanks.
I was away from Trinidad this past weekend, thanks here, my mom again, South Carolina, and I'm so sorry to miss, I watched everything carefully on Facebook, and I'm like, that looks so fun.
Yeah.
It was, it looks like it just is getting better and better, so I just wanted to also thank Mr. Chatterley for all his work and everyone's work on that. Such a great thing. I followed up with Ken Chapin, who spoke to us about the Smithsonian thing that's coming to Space to Create this morning, and we talked for about an hour and a half, and just more and more, I would like to see us as a city express support for this because it's going to be an amazing event. And one thing that he told me that I was really happy about is that Mr. Ruper and he had been working on accessibility issues to make sure that every event that is gonna be part of that, we've looked at all the issues surrounding accessibility to make it as accessible as possible, and in the process, we, we found some really low-hanging fruit that we could fix in the city that will make things better for people who are wheelchair-bound or have issues with mobility. So just, I'm really pleased to get to know him. He's an incredible asset for our community, and he's just really got a lot of energy, and this thing's gonna be amazing, so that's all.
Just real quick, the Rad Fest was great, speaking for Parks and Recs, by the way. Also, the golf course situation is a spaz, spaz is not really good considering the million-dollar number. So Parks and Rec has a lot to talk about, figure out if we wanna, how we wanna bite this elephant and whittle it down to nothing, so that's all I got at this point.
You know, one thing that I wanted to say about this weekend is that all the staff that was involved with this, there were several staff members that were, they're doing different things. Matter of fact, I sat with Kim and Donna and Audra and myself, and we were the chaperones. But all the involvement that our staff had with this event, plus the leadership that goes, Mr. Chatterley or whoever, and even anybody else, did a tremendous job on the Rad Fest. And very, very, I was very, very pleased to see the activity that was. It seemed like the community is getting a little more involved, one day next to them getting more involved, so that hopefully they're building. One thing that was interesting this year that they had was a race for the people that were disabilities. And they asked me to start the race, and that was kind of cool, but there was, there was a gentleman and his father and brother, and I'm not sure who were here, and I was talking to them, the dead man's name was Roger, and then his wife, and they were from Idaho, and they came here specifically for that race. And I think they brought the little bikes or whatever that they used with, and had a good conversation, and he did ask me one favor, and I have to find out for sure. He had done some research, and he was asking that, he was asking about the Children's Museum and saying that, are they, is this an old jailhouse underneath the basement?
And a fire department.
Sure is.
Yep.
Now, the other thing too is he said that Billy the Kid may have been housed there when he was here?
No, nobody said we had.
Area lineman?
I worked in the fire department down there next station.
Like Billy the Kid?
Absolutely, and brought him into town.
Older?
Well, not the real Billy the Kid, but Billy.
Anyway, the reason he's asking me, matter of fact, he gave me his contact information and knows any truth to any of that, I need to email, and at least I could tell that there's, you know, there's a jail bound, but.
Yes.
No Billy the Kid maybe authenticated by one of our colleagues.
There definitely is a jail, the cells are there.
Like I said, I think some of us attended the Hilton opening a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
Really nice facility to the community. It was, there were probably about a couple hundred people there that night, and I think all of us were there, Frank, did you go?
No, I didn't get a chance, but everybody that I talked to, everybody, he said it was really, really nice.
It's a, it's a nice, it's a nice hotel, and they're offering some amazing, there's never had that here, so that's kind of neat.
Great asset.
Attended the CML regional meeting. Of course, they were just talking about some of the things that are gonna be coming forward in this, next year. Matter of fact, they've got a meeting that I've got to attend to sometime later this month, their first meeting. Also went to the chamber luncheon, and then they had a lady there that was discussing that proposition, HH, in detail, you were there, and you were doing it, and it's a scary situation, so we'll see what happens with that. I had Joey Bob coming up next week to talk about it on the radio. I met with a gentleman from Temple Aaron yesterday, and he was telling me about the, they're trying to raise some funding, and they have some coins that they have. As a matter of fact, I bought one, and they're available for anybody, if anybody wants one, you know, let me know, and I can give you his contact information. Because it's 140th anniversary, they only minted 140 coins, so it's cool, so. I got number 27 or 29, so it's kind of. You didn't get in the chili competition? I didn't, I mean, he asked me to. He asked me to. But had some stomach problems, I just. Other than that, like I said, at this point, that's all I have. Mr. Ruper, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. I'll dovetail on what Chris said, I've been talking with Neil Paul from Temple Aaron as well. He wants to start an alternative school there for some of our youth, and so he'll be coming to a future work session to talk about his ideas, and we'll help coordinate with Bonnie and Dr. Epper and see if we can make some good things happen for our youth in our community through, through his efforts. But I wanted to mention just a couple of things. I'm here in Austin at the ICMA conference this morning. I had coffee with Jeremy Stevens from Managing Results, he's our, he's on our planning consultants team, and they're very excited for Trinidad, and we're excited to have them, and I think we're gonna be in terrific hands. They're, they get our vision, they, they understand that we want things that are measurable, realistic, and they're eager to come help us whittle down all the ideas we have in our community into some semblance of a five-year plan. They'll be starting very soon, they're gonna, here in November, to start doing visual interviews, so look out for information on that. And then we'll probably do a strategic planning retreat towards the end of the year or early next year as well. So certainly anybody who's newly elected come November can be part of the processes. Whoever those people are will be the ones helping me and the city administer the plan. So definitely a good thing. I did my presentation today and really got to drum up some great enthusiasm about Trinidad. I told everybody how great it is here in Trinidad, and I think I have a lot of people who are jealous in the city management world of all the wonderful things we're working on, and also very interested in coming to see what we have to offer. So it's been a really good time for networking and seeing some colleagues, so I really appreciated that. And then last, but certainly not least, I, I have to, you know, echo what the mayor said, I can't thank our staff enough. I, I don't think the public realizes the countless hours that our staff has put in in planning, organizing, even spearheading. The ABC disability race was, was something that Amisa Roth thought of when she was working with ABC disability. I got to wave the flag at the finish line, and it was just so amazing and so powerful for those, those kids to be able to participate in something great. And it was just terrific to see the whole town come alive this weekend, so very proud of everything that happened, and I just couldn't be more thrilled with the staff that we have and their willingness to pitch in and do whatever they can to make Trinidad great.
You know, Mr. Ruper, what you're doing like in Austin, you know, you're raising awareness of Trinidad, and that's really what all of us need to be doing. Whenever we go to work, to go to meetings, raise that awareness about Trinidad, and talk positively about it, and I wish that the entire community would talk positively, because there's a lot of the street positive stuff going on in the community.
There's actually Trinidad, Texas.
Yeah, there is.
And Cal.
And California.
Not to be confused with.
And also, usually when I talk to Neil Paul, he has like nine extra rooms up at the Eckhart School, and I told him that I would get in touch with Rhonda, Rhonda Epper. So I called her today, and I said at some point if this emergency campus gets overflowed, that he may be open to, you know, having some of those businesses up there. So she's aware of it already, and you can talk to her some more about it, I think that'd be great. Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I just want to say Thursday, I reported on this before, but I'm gonna say again, Thursday is Legal Resource Day, as you know, and good, thank you, if you know anyone who's in need of free legal advice. Oh, no, you don't miss out. Don't you be, no, I'm just kidding. Okay, and so I wanted to mention that, that's what we, Space to Create, in the afternoon. Also, Mr. Hux, very nicely in his flyer, put tentative drinks and alcohol since the special events permit application was on the agenda tonight. That's always very concerning. He didn't assume. Anyway, that's all I have. All the attorneys were all, thank you.
Well, that's Space to Create is getting a lot of use.
Yeah, it is. It really is.
Saturday was amazing. How many things were going on in that building?
Registration, and speaker.
Chili, arts and crafts.
It's a good hub. It's kind of a natural hub, yeah.
It is very much so.
God, I do have an executive session for the focus of determining positions relative to matters by maybe subject to negotiations. Without the strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-2, 4E, property leases, motion to go into executive session.
No move.
Second?
Second.
Colville, please.
Tabana?
Yes.
Kriego?
Yes.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yep.
Thurman?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Okay.